Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2022. Call the meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Let the record reflect that all the city councilors are present. I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Under your general this evening, I'd like to thank Save Our Shore Saco Bay for collaborating with the program this morning. The Third Annual Symposium was held here in City Hall Chambers. It was a well-attended and a well-informative event. So, thank you very much to President Kevin Roach and Vice President David Plaven. With that, we are at Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Saco Conservation Commission has developed a green space checklist noting that the charter tasks them with conducting research on local land uses and orders them to provide environmental and technical assistance to the review of development proposals in front of our planning board. They decided that they needed set criteria by which potential conservation land could be evaluated. So, at the last meeting, they developed a draft of such criteria, and it will come to various city boards, groups, and staff members, including city council, in the future for review.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence to council? Moving on to Item 6, Public Comment. First up is Peter Scontress. For those coming up to the podium, please, three minutes, and you speak directly into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to stand here before you all, but especially the four former students of mine and a parent of three of my former students. So, I'm connected to seven of you somehow. I don't know how that ever happened, but here I am. Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of the Saco City Council, thank you for the privilege of speaking before you this evening. Initiatives that I have been developing for the past several years are important for the betterment and more complete understanding of our beloved city of Saco. Last I talked with the mayor in December 2020, I was pleased to hear that the council was progressing with the city historian's description and responsibilities. The mayor told me in early 2020 that he would appoint me as Saco City Historian after all the codification, if that's the right word, was approved. Based on that conversation, I continued to formulate the details of establishing programs for both Saco's and Bedford's schools, including Saco's general public and visitors to our beautiful city. I have planned four routes for guided tours within Saco, and I'm working on transportation issues relative to a fifth tour route. I would ask that we work together in developing a flyer describing the options of five tours and salient talking points. I would not accept compensation, as that's the least I can do for the city I love so dearly. I'm sorry. I expressed my plan to the mayor shortly after his election in 2020. The bulk of what I discussed with him and the general description of the expectations and responsibilities of a city historian that you approved are there. He told me then my thoughts had to be codified, and that after its approval by the city council, he would appoint me to the position of Saco City Historian. I was pleased that you passed that codified language, city council and Mr. Mayor, in the spring of 2021. However, as mentioned, the mayor has not further discussed that with me since that December of 2020. Commitment is necessary to retain Saco and Bedford's youngest lifelong residents of their native cities. To reach that, and I have been actively developing an interesting local studies curriculum the past three and a half years after the mayor's commitment to me. I anticipate presenting it to superintendents, curriculum specialists, school boards of both communities. Developing this, I have received assistance over the years from some of Saco's valued local historians. Roy Fairfield was perhaps the most eminent Saco historian of our time, and he and I had many conversations, and he trained me to be the Saco City Historian when my time came. Before passing at age 99, Roy and I discussed how and what to incorporate into our Saco Studies Program within our schools, including Thornton Academy. Although also, 84-year-old Sally Hewitt, eminent Saco historian, said to me today that she definitely supports my candidacy for Saco City Historian and is pleased that I'm working with both communities. The city historian's position carries leverage and credibility necessary so that innovative programs can be established. My reputation as an educator and a scholar in Saco is impeccable. Any counselor who is a former student of mine can testify about my love for them as students then and support of them as committed Saco citizens today. The main institution of middle-level education awarded me an exemplary practice award for my teaching. Some of you don't know that because you don't know me. My public record is an open slate. The only part of that of which I am most disappointed because of the standards I hold for myself is my time on the planning board. Never have I disappointed myself to the extent that I did during my time on that Saco Planning Board. My service was way below my personal standards, and I'm available, if you would like to discuss that, with me in executive session. I have served on several committees and commissions. I won't go into it now because I don't have the time. Of course, I would be willing, as Saco's city historian, to present lectures and slide shows to Saco's organization and groups, to the city council administrators throughout the city, and to attend and present at conferences throughout the country, as I have did when I was teaching, as I believe that my skill set, experience, and network of pertinent contacts will serve and honor our beloved city well. I've been taught by the best and wish to apply all of it to Saco's needs. Lastly, former students who visit the Wayway Store frequently thank me for teaching them how to be a better writer and adult by modeling the life lessons that enable them to be happy according to their ability level. Lastly, my former students encourage me to keep up my effort in the study and teaching of Saco's history, as they already benefited so much. I hope I will be given the opportunity to do that until my dying breath. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Kelly Archer. And again, just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer of 185 Bradley Street. I'm surprised I was here to just yield my time to Peter if he went over. So, thank you very much for giving him that time, and I support everything that Inga has brought forward to you in her letter, and Jane, and myself, and I thank you for this time.
Up next is Jane Karen.
Good evening. Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco. And I ask that Peter Scontress be supported as the first city historian for the city of Saco. I think his experience and historic knowledge is a gift to us, and it's almost as though he's a landmark himself. So, please consider that. And the downtown district 1,500-foot requirement that's on the agenda, please consider that that has to be fully vetted, including parking, traffic, and so forth, before lowering that requirement of square footage. And I support Inga's letter and concerns about the left-hand turn for Saco. And then also, I ask for the city's support on the purchase of a dredge, the support letter for the purchase of a dredge for Camp Ellis. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Inga Brown.
Good evening. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. I have several items to bring forward this evening. I fully support the city sending the letter in this evening's packet to the York County Commissioners regarding the purchase of dredge equipment that could be acquired with ARPA funds. I think our coastal erosion is one of our community's top priorities. I would like to share my support this evening for the appointment of city historian in the name of Mr. Peter Scontress. Mr. Scontress fully deserves our community's support on this nomination. He deserves your support here this evening, and I'd like to see action on his delayed appointment. I do not support changing the minimum lot area for the downtown dimensional standards based on the zoning petition of one developer. The entire process for this agenda item has been fraught with issues of poor process, and I'd like to see a fair and robust discussion occur on this item with wider community stakeholders, including more residents of the downtown district. Mayor Doyle, I do not approve of your actions on March 7th of posing contrived and leading questions to the city planner on the topic of dimensional standards. I believe you should have relinquished your chair in order to present your personal thinking and opinions instead of masking them through a list of leading questions that you read from your notepad. I would like to direct support and approval for council to make a motion to place contract zone ordinance review on the agenda for discussion at the next council meeting on March 28th. Inaction on this critical topic after a multitude of requests for it to be on the agenda is another symptom of a non-responsive, closed-door approach regarding setting of the agenda for council meetings. I know that all of you received a longer letter from me this week about poor process, and I hope that you took the time to read it. Regarding the turn lane for the Ecology School, unfortunately, council, you've been operating in a vacuum. This is not your fault. You're simply not being given the information that you need about the turn lane. This is a very detailed site plan process agenda item. This is the site plan binder. Counselor Purdy, I appreciated your comment last meeting on March 7th when you pointed out that 112 is a state road, and of course, the DOT will be involved. That really showed me very much how DOT is mentioned in the site plan process over and over for the turn lane. So, you simply don't have access to the information that you need to make a good decision. When my time is over, I'd like to approach the dais. I do have a copy of the last traffic report from June 2018. I'd like to provide you the narrative portion, and in this report, many pieces of information that you don't have are present. And I'd like to point out, it's not just that the Ecology School is increasing traffic on Simpson Road. It is also the type of traffic. This traffic study details that a turning radius is needed for Buxton Road to Simpson Road. The type of charter buses, the types of delivery trucks that the Ecology School, through a contract zone, is adding to Simpson Road is one of the reasons that this independent peer review found that the turn lane was required. So, in closing, I do want to point out that I take issue, Counselor Berman, I was very upset that you are philosophizing from your armchair about the traffic on Simpson Road, that perhaps because the bridge is open, this is creating traffic. That is simply not true. If you could please do your homework or ask city staff, to all of you, to provide you with the information that you need to make good decisions, or to ask city staff to come forward when you have further questions on these items, I think the level of discourse and the level of clarity and facts would benefit all of us. So, I'm going to urge you, when this item comes back from the tabling, to vote no on spending city money on a private developer's site plan condition of approval. And I'm also going to ask you to vote no on a complex, heavy sub-agreement in which city staff would be shouldering an enormous amount of work in carrying out a BPI funding mechanism for this particular item. So, thank you for your attention, and if I may, I would like to just pass out that report. Thank you for the time.
That is all for those that have signed up. If there's anyone wishing to speak to the council, please come forward and be heard. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Dan Lasky, 23 Skyline Drive in Saco. I just really feel very, very lucky to have the people that have just come up and spoken in the city and looking out for our best interest. And I just want to say that I'm in full agreement with what Kelly Archer has sent, what Inga Brown has sent on March 16th, and just has spoken so well tonight on, on the turn. Just to me that they had made an agreement to do it, so they need to follow through what they had agreed to do. With what Jane Karen had on March 19th, on her several items. Also, Kevin Roach, I mean, I think it's looking for the funds to support the letter of interest for York County to buy the dredge. I'm 65 years old. I've lived in Saco for 60 of those years, and that's been an issue since I've lived here. And I think it's a very important, it's a big part of Saco and a popular part of Saco. And then finally, Peter Scontress, I mean, he is a true person in Saco that we really should cherish. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what you're waiting for. If somebody willing to do it, somebody would do a fantastic job. Has already done a fantastic job. You have promised him the job. Counselors, I don't know what we're waiting for here, so. He has also taught all three of my children. And, Peter, I would disagree. I thought you and many others did a great job on the planning board under some pretty tough circumstances. I'm proud of what you did, and I think you should be also. And lastly, we're not really doing much here, guys. You guys really need, guys and girls, I'm sorry, you, I'd like you to see personally, take more charge, and you guys get some of your items on the agenda. You've got, you're very good people. You're smart people. You've got great ideas. Let's bring them out, and, Mr. Mayor, let them put their agenda items on there so we can get this city moving and get it going forward. It's not helping us. We all need to work together and work for the best interests of the city of Saco. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Littlefield, 171 Simpson Road. This is going to be really brief. I support what everybody has said during this public comment period, and especially, I will support Peter Scontress. He really deserves the job. That's it for tonight.
Hello. Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. Side note, I wasn't preparing a speech, but I congratulate Peter Scontress to be considered. He'll forget, I forget, he'll forget more things about Saco than I'll ever remember. So, I just want to just congratulate him at least to be this far with you guys. I want to thank, first, the mayor and my counselor, Counselor Berman, for being part of, key parts of our Save Our Shore's Saco Bay Symposium, and our Vice President, David Plaven, for doing all the yeoman's work for it. It's a lot, a lot of, the reaction we already got back is the commitment that all levels of government and areas of the city that support these efforts. On your agenda tonight is a letter of interest, a letter of support. There's no funds on this, on this vote tonight. It is to show we're getting York County communities on board, and we just like to have Saco's, you know, interest to move things forward. Whether it becomes a host or, or other, other funding is certainly greatly appreciated, but tonight, we would, we'd just like to get that passed, as many communities have already passed. We have Kenny Bunk tomorrow. We have Kenny Bunkport Thursday. We have three or four already committed to us. And then finally, these are big things, right? These are big items. And, you know, the items that are on, have been discussed up here, I'm concerned that you get bogged down into some things that really, really don't have to be the hills to die on. I mean, really. You know, I have only four years of experience. I know other councilors and school members have a lot of experience, but, you know, you find yourself, you're going to agree 75, 80% of the time, and then have those robust debates on the other 20, 25. I mean, one example of the many that are brought up is, is the contract zones. The contract zones, really, it's, on one side, you've got to figure out, what are we trying to vote on here? You know, because you don't want to burden councilors and staff with stuff that, you know, should be worked out in the normal course of business. But, on the other hand, you know, we kind of want the picture. I mean, it's, there's no harm to get something on there and debate. No harm. And if the vote is simply to have a speaker from the planning office or economic development come up here twice a year to give you an update, so be it. Or, discuss it in council comment, right in front of us here, or memos, or postings to the city, whatever the case may be. I just, I feel like you just get, you know, bogged down, and, you know, maybe it's all of our fault. It's not on one mayor. It's maybe me blabbing up here. But, I'm just saying that we got to, we got to get beyond this, because we've got big things. We've got the new school, new school, the shoreline, and some, some news of economic development in the town. Those are the three biggies, and I'll credit this council and mayor, if just one, if not all of them, I think, can get through. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to the council, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Broschu from 257 Buxton Road. Wanted to touch on a couple items. I mean, I'm very much in support of the very eloquent people you heard earlier this evening. Downtown density, it was very, very heavily vetted, and it would need to be re-vetted to do that. There's a lot of issues there. I would hope that you would just find a negative vote until all those items could be truly ran through the process. Again, I sat on part of that zoning revision committee, and it was a very long ruling process with a lot of details brought forth. And I would hope that maybe somebody from the council would consider, as I mentioned earlier in a previous meeting, bringing forth some sort of a, an amendment or an ordinance where after these major revisions take place, our zoning revision ordinance, our site plan standard ordinances, that you wouldn't entertain a modification from one petitioner within a one- or two-year period. The city spends so much money on these consultants drafting these forms, running countless hours. I just think it's not effective use of your time. Mr. Roach was talking about you being bogged down. This is a good example. We're throwing something on your agenda that was vetted by 30 members of the, of the community on different boards. Second, the dredge, I think I'm very much in support of getting the information. It's a letter to get more information in front of you. You can't make an informed decision without details, so I hope that you support that letter for a very important part of our community, kind of the cornerstone between the mills and our maritime history. It's still, it's very important. I wish that you at least support it to get the information to you to figure out what it may cost us long-term. Finally, with regards to the city historian, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Scontress for three years on the planning board. During that time, I was always impressed at how much that man brought to our group institutional knowledge, such a detail with applications that would come before us. And it was with a very heavy heart that I learned about a year ago that he would be leaving the board, because I felt like I had so much more to learn from him. Now, I wasn't fortunate enough to have Mr. Scontress as a, as a teacher during my tenure at Saco Middle School, but he was there at the same time, and one of his children was about the same age. And I watched, over the years, the, the love of our community, the importance of fabric, of, of family time and community and commitment that the Scontress family has for the, for the betterment of Saco. So, when I had the opportunity to learn and kind of understudy from him on the planning board, it was like, I felt like I had so much more to learn. And then I received the news that the mayor had promised him a position of city historian, which obviously is one of his passions and something he's very good at. Like I said, he brought tremendous detail to many applications that were before us. So, I would really hope that the councilors would find a way to make sure that Mr. Scontress receives the appointment of the city historian. He's a wonderful gift to our community and would, would do us all proud in that position. And I think it would be a great way for him to be able to continue to give forth information to both council and planning board as details come forward. I'm not sure how many times he would have talked about the use of a particular site on the industrial base, and, oh, red flag, there might be some possible contamination there, or, oh, red flag, there might be some historical artifact value there. All things that we were responsible for reviewing on the planning board. So, if you would, for, for the betterment of our community, please appoint Mr. Scontress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further folks like to speak to council? Okay, moving on from public comment to Item 7, Approval of the Minutes for February 28th and March 7th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch, any discussion on the minutes? Roll call vote on the minutes. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 8, Consent Items. There are two items. Item A, approve April council dates, and Item B, confirmation of city administrator to the Bedford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit Board. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the consent agenda. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 8, or, excuse me, Item 9, Action Items. We have Item A, a first reading authorization of funding through a school revolving renovation fund program, $771,020 grant, and $756,054 bond. At 0% interest, Page 4 in your packet, and that is Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Maine Department of Education has awarded funding of $1,527,074 to the Saco School Department for Health, Safety, and Compliance Improvements to Saco Middle School, exterior doors and bathroom and ADA accessibility, and Governor John Fairfield School, exterior doors and indoor air quality. 50.49% of the loan is forgiven via a grant. 49.51% is repaid over 10 years at 0% interest. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the following order in substantially the same form as presented, order authorizing the city of Saco to accept a school revolving renovation fund grant up to $771,020, and to issue 0-interest bonds in an amount not to exceed $756,054, both under a $1,527,074 loan agreement with the Maine Bond Bank and providing for health, safety, and compliance renovations at Saco Middle School and Governor John Fairfield School, and further move to schedule a public hearing on the order for April 11th, 2022. I move to approve the order and the public hearing schedule.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Thank you. I'm supportive of this. I think any chance that we have to borrow money at 0% interest, as well as have the state pay for half of important projects, is an opportunity not to be missed. I'd also remind anyone listening that although the current school construction project may end up replacing Governor John end up replacing Governor John Fairfield School, we will have that school for at least another five years while that process carries on, perhaps even longer. So this isn't a short-term investment. It's an investment in the long term. Thank you.
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So I'm not sure if the superintendent can answer these, or perhaps this is for bond council or the finance team. I mean, as, as Councilor Berman just stated, you know, we're obviously going to have this school for at least another five years, so obviously if there's needs, it makes sense we spend some funds on those needs. The questions I have is, by accepting these funds, grant, and the bond, do we know what impact that may have on what we can do with this school building in the future? So what I mean by that is, you know, we, we all know that we're, we're talking about consolidation. I assume that the state understands that, too. And I don't know if you're, you're dealing with two different elements of the state, but I would, I would hope that, you know, we wouldn't be told if we go through this process, we go out and we borrow this money, and we get this bond, and then they kind of tell us that, well, you can't consolidate because, you know, we've borrowed money. And then that second question, again, about how long, I mean, it's a 10-year loan, so my concern is that in five years, we move into a new school, and then there's a period of five years where we're sitting on a school building, and we can't do anything with it because we borrowed money. And I don't know if that's factual or not, just, I know that there's, myself included, a good segment of the population in Saco that would like to see Fairfield restored to the park. And so, again, if this is going to create a hiccup, I think maybe you'd be better off trying to find another way to fund it. Thank you.
Okay, so let me, let me answer a couple of those questions individually. So the first piece is, what we're, what you're approving here tonight is just, or to move it forward is just to get it on the ballot, so that we can, as, as the citizens can make a, a selection at, in June. The second piece is that just because we vote to authorize the spending of the money, I believe that we would want to have a lot of conversation about what happens on the elementary school side. You know, Mike mentioned we may still be there for five years, which, yes, we will be there for five years, but that will be a conversation of whether we move ahead with that section of the project for that school. When you look at the doors at $55,000, that is definitely a need that has to happen. The ADA piece is there, but I think that would warrant further discussion about what may be next for all of our buildings. Either way, it won't limit any of our ability to make decisions about new construction whatsoever. So just an example is that, that in the other community of Bedford, we had a revolving renovations grant that we got the award like two weeks before we shut down schools for COVID. And we had approved the projects and the budget, but because of the COVID situation, one, the price went up so much, and number two, you couldn't get people to work on that. So we just had to let some of those just not happen, and it's just deducted off your amount of what you borrowed when you, when you drew up. So you have no worries about taking this and having any, the state limit any of your other projects as you move forward. If you did do the work for Fairfield School, and let's say it closed someday, or whatever the, you would be on the hook for repaying your portion of the loan.
Thank you.
Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think, I liked Councilor Johnston's question, and I, my brain went somewhere else, so I just want to confirm. I think what he was asking is, is if we do not use it the way it was intended, for example, you build all the, you drop $250,000 in renovations to the school, and then in six years, we tear it down, or we do something with it, that there's no penalty. So if you think of federal bonds that we've dealt with in the past, there's many, many restrictions, and we're just trying to make sure that we're not on the hook to then have to pay back the unforgiven, or the forgiven amount because we're not following certain rules that they--
I could, I can follow up on that, but that is not my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McPhail?
Thank you. Now, you just stated, so if we go through, and let's say, you know, it's passed, we get the funds, if we go through and start, and we look at something and say, okay, well, Fairfield, we don't need the doors right now, that money cannot be used against something else. It would have to be given back.
Correct. The only, the only way that we can spend funds that have state support behind it is on these four different approved projects. So we couldn't, you know, say, oh, well, we want to spend 55 on whatever windows. These are specific projects that's been approved by the DOE to meet the needs in those buildings.
And you said the money would just be given back and then deducted from--
Correct.
--the total loan amount.
So they wouldn't give us the, the 50%, and we wouldn't be making a payment for that line item.
Any further questions? Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item B, a first reading petition for zoning text amendment to chapter 230, table 4-1, dimension standards, page nine in your packet, and that is Councilor Purdy.
By petition, Alex Favish is requesting the city consider amending chapter 230 subsection 4-1, table 4-1, dimensional standards for the downtown zone, minimum lot area per dwelling unit. The petitioner requests to lessen the minimum standard from 1,500 square feet to 600 square, 650 square feet. Favish is the current owner of 63 Storer Street. That's map 38, lot 43. 63 Storer Street is a .29 acre property currently conditioned as a mixed-use building with commercial space on the ground floor and eight apartments on the upper floor. In October of 2020, Favish expressed interest in converting the vacant first-floor commercial space into four residential units, making for a total of 12, 12 units. However, the addition of the proposed units is not in compliance with the minimum lot area per dwelling unit dimensional standard. Because of this, Favish sought a contract zone in May of 2021. The contract zone ultimately failed to receive a positive recommendation because it did not meet the criteria necessary to warrant a contract zone. Favish now seeks an amendment to the zoning ordinance to lessen the minimum, minimum standard from 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit to 650 square feet per dwelling unit. The petition was reviewed, reviewed by the planning board at its January 4th, 2022 and February 2nd, 2022 meetings. Staff made recommendations to lessen the standard based on numerical values represented in other city zones, as well as those standards of compatible or comparable neighboring towns. Planning staff recommendations of a lessened minimum are supported by the comprehensive plan. The planning board motion to lessen the standard had a split vote, three to three, and therefore a negative recommendation is forwarded to the council. The city council hereby approves the first reading of the chapter 230 subsection 4-1, table 4-1, dimensional standards, downtown zone, minimum lot area per dwelling unit amendment, and further moves to schedule a public hearing on March 28th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Council Archer?
Yes, I also do agree that, again, we did spend more than six figures on this, on the ZORS throughout the process through consultants, and here we are, pretty much trying to overrule what was the committee that brought to us just two years ago. I think this shouldn't have even been brought up. I'm going to be voting this down today, just on the mere fact of, one, you've got a planning board giving a negative recommendation, and, two, we just went through a two-year process with significant resources being spent identifying that this was not what the ZORS committee wanted. So just wanted to reiterate that.
Further discussion? Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed the last meeting on this, you know, I do believe in the density changes to the downtown, but based on this, and, and more so the negative record, the tied vote, which equals a negative recommendation from the planning board, just shows that they were not in agreeance as well. And I do not believe that this has been fully looked at based on what the ZORS had presented us. And again, this, this point right now for me, too, as well, I believe that at some point, this does need to be looked at, but now is not the time.
Councilor Hatch?
I would echo agreement with my first two councilors' opinions and suggest even further, when you look at the negative vote from the planning board, I made this comment the last time this came up. We only have three members of the planning board who were around during the ZORS process. One of them was absent the night of the meeting, and two of the three negative votes came from the two remaining planning board members who were part of that ZORS process, in my view, out of respect to the comments that were just made here of the process that led to the 1,500. I, I'm, you know, like many others, I'm in favor of revisiting an increased density for the downtown zone. I just think it needs to be done with more discipline and, and more vetting to, to allow this to happen with, with a single property owner request, I think is, is short-sighted on our part. And, and also, I would, if we're going to revisit this, it would be my hope and suggestion that we revisit the increased density in concert with a comprehensive look at affordable housing here in, in the city, which, you know, is, is definitely part of the comp plan, but requires a much broader view. So I, I would not be in favor of moving forward under these circumstances. Thank you.
Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find this to be a somewhat difficult issue. Well, I agree with the com, sorry, I agree with the comments that the ZORS committee underwent extensive study, and I also understand the planning board is forwarding us a negative recommendation, and I also wish, or I'm concerned about the idea of a petition making a large change in our downtown zone. I also understand that we're in the midst of a housing crisis, that housing prices are through the roof. It's impossible for young families, young couples, young people to find housing in the Saco-Biddeford area that's anything like affordable, and that's primarily a supply and demand problem. I also understand that if we're going to solve that problem, that's going to mean new development, and if we're going to have new development that doesn't contribute substantially to a traffic problem, that means additional development downtown. So in general, I'm, I'm highly supportive of increasing the density downtown and believe that's, that's the only way that we're going to get a handle on our housing crisis by creating a livable community and units within walkable distance to services downtown, especially where there's already sewer and water. And that will boost the economic development and job growth and commercial growth that we need to offset the higher property taxes that are concerning to so many residents. And so in front of me, I have a plan that seeks to accomplish some of that and make use of vacant space, and that's very attractive. On the other hand, I agree with the concerns that it's not been fully vetted, and that making large changes at the request of one, following a negative planning board recommendation, is to be taken seriously. So I find myself on the fence.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. And I said what I said about this two weeks ago, and really, not much has changed. I mean, I certainly am still supportive of the concept as I was during the ZORS process, but, I mean, it seems fairly loud and clear from members of the public and, and other members I've spoken to in my ward and, and this zone in particular, that, you know, it needs to be further vetted. You know, I might self-have concerns when you do a blanket change like this, how it impacts other things such as parking, which, until we address those in a cohesive manner, it seems problematic to me from where I stand going about this. You know, I, I did, a couple of weeks ago, whenever it was we last met, came up with what I thought was a, a reasonable approach to at least, to short-term solution to this. And again, I'm happy to work with the city administrator to, you know, bring that about instead of doing a blanket change to the entirety of the zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Councilor Purdy?
Thank you. Where I read this into the record and made the motion, my understanding is I can't, I can't really talk against it according to our rules, so I'll tread carefully here. I, my, I'm in support of lessening the, the square footage for downtown. I think we need to seriously look at that. But I'm uncomfortable, as I said a couple, I made my comments a couple of weeks ago, and I'll let those stand. I guess I'd like to see the, the 650-square-foot dimension is based on a program that doesn't exist in our city, so what I would say is if the city staff, planning department, would like to bring a program such as that to us, I'd like to have that discussion and, and work on some of the, the parking issues and whatnot as well. I'm going to stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Council Archer?
No.
Councilor Purdy?
No.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
No.
Councilor McPhail?
No.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
A motion passes 5-2. Excuse me, motion fails 5-2. That brings us to item C, a first reading budget amendment number six, wage and comp implementation, page 33 in your packet. That is Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. The City of Saco approved the wage and compensation study in 2021. Since then, Human Resource Department has worked to analyze existing wages and prepare recommended adjustments in line with the results of the wage and compensation wage scales. This budget amendment increases affected departmental lines to reflect wage changes for the remainder of the fiscal year. Staff recommends approval. Be it ordered that the council approve the first reading of budget amendment number six and further set the date for the final reading to March 28th, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston, second by Councilor Archer. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item D, one reading authorization to send dredge letter of support to York County officials, page 35 in your packet, and that is Councilor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. ARPA funds are available through York County and could be used to fund regional dredge equipment. Neighboring municipalities and elected officials have shared their support of this purchase. York County Commissioners will be voting in April on the funding request. Be it ordered that the city council authorize sending a letter to the York County Commissioners encouraging them to support funding dredge equipment using ARPA funds.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those who listened to or attended SOS Saco Bay's conference today, you're aware that the problem we have on the coast is one of sand movement. Sand moves. That's what it does. Water moves it. In a healthy, undisturbed ecosystem, the sand would move northward in Saco Bay, and it would be replenished by the water coming down the Saco River. The man-made structure of the jetty stops that sand from replenishing Camp Ellis, but it doesn't stop the sand from moving northward along Saco Bay, causing that erosion. The solutions that we're planning to fix that, whether it be option six, the jetty spur with the Army Corps of Engineers, or perhaps the living shoreline solution of using these wave attenuation devices, neither one of those solutions changes the fundamental fact that sand is going to move north along Saco Bay, leaving erosion. They hope to slow the erosion, holding sand there for longer, but-- They hope to slow the erosion, holding sand there for longer, but no responsible plan will stop that movement altogether. Otherwise, you'll just pass the erosion problem down the coast. Whatever solution we implement will require the replenishment of sand along Saco Bay. Thus, it's exciting that we have an opportunity with different levels of government coming together to solve those problems. This dredge provides the source of that sand replenishment that when used in concert with the Army Corps of Engineers solution, or the living shoreline solution, solution, could provide a long-term fix to that region, providing stability and support and, and ending the chronic erosion that we're facing. And so I just strongly urge us to move forward with this. I think it's a necessary step of a multi-part process that will eventually fix the problem at Camp Ellis.
Thank you. Any for Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also do agree with Counsel Berman. However, I also want to add that I see it as an investment. Currently, every year, we spend about $250,000 on sand. We're adding it to there, so it's a annual, year-to-year cost of ours. I see, again, sharing the cost. I don't see the full totality purchase of the dredge for solely Saco. I do see a potential benefit from the investment perspective in which we can reduce certain costs that we already have and use those funds to actually help with the maintenance. If I also remember correctly, it was 25 years before we had that dredged, and we can't wait 25 years. So this, us having a communal dredge can help bring those services in a lot faster than the federal government has in our past. So that's why I'm interested in this interest, a letter of interest. I still need a lot more details before I talk about funding it, but that will come in time.
Any further discuss, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Two previous counselors really summarized it very well. But again, I was also thinking along the same lines as Counselor Archer, particularly where, you know, this is a kind of a win-win where we have the channel, the river, that had took 25 years to actually finally get dredged again. Like, really isn't supposed to be done every 10 years, I believe. So, you know, we're able to maximize the use from dredging the river and opening that up for both the commercial fishermen, the commercial uses, plus the recreational side of things, while at the same time using that sand to then nourish the beach. So to me, like, I felt Counselor said, it seems like a win-win situation, you know, and certainly supportive of it and how we go about funding it, we'll, we'll figure out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to item E, a public hearing, comprehensive plan 2022 to 2034, adoption, page 37 in your packet. That is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After more than a year of data collection, public meetings, and online engagement, the city's consultant has prepared a draft of Saco's updated comprehensive plan. Saco's comprehensive plan establishes the basis for making strategic city policy project and budget decisions by articulating a vision for the future and outlining the goals, objectives, and strategies to achieve it. It also provides the rationale and legal support for zoning, impact fees, and other regulations that guide or restrict development in, in the community. To facilitate this, the plan articulates goals and strategies that are to be implemented via decisions made by city staff, the planning board, and city council within timeframes which reflect the community's expressed priorities for the future. The planning board forwarded a positive recommendation of the draft plan with changes to the land use map and implementation matrix after holding public hearings on January 18th and February 1st. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Open the public hearing passes seven-zero at 7:27 PM. If there's anyone who would like to address the council on the comprehensive plan, please come forward and be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Plavon. I live at Two Surf Street, Saco. Well, I have no real beef against the plan. I do ask that we keep the beach and the coastal area in the forefront. I think it's a, an enormous economic possibility and revenue generating area for the city of Saco. And I'm a little concerned that sometimes that it gets pushed to the back instead of, you know, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't concentrate on Main Street or other areas. I know it's, it's all important, but I want to make sure that, you know, while resiliency and sustainability are nice words, nicer words would be a structure in the bay that would keep the waves to a minimum so we can actually get on with developing the beach, making it more vital. We all know, and we all know what it means to us and whether it gets reworded in the council. The other, the only other thing that I think is important too is that, I know it's, it only goes out to 2034, but that we develop some sort of long-term plan to, you know, with all the environmental hazards that we face, that we have a long-term plan as to how we're going to maintain these beaches for years to come. I think we can't afford to lose them. And it's, it's, to me, it's very important. We have Camp Ellis and we have the Ferry Beach Retreat as two great areas of potential. And if we can revitalize them, then I think it'll be a huge benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing on the comprehensive plan?
Hi again, this is Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I def, I agree with the previous speaker as far as the sustainability, the economics, not just to save our shores and protecting it, but the environment and bringing the, bringing the attention to our beaches, more so in the comp plan, I think is very important. And I also think, I want to thank our new city planner and his staff to come in after the two to three years that some of us have gone through, and to be able to pick this ball up and bring us to today in front of you. Kudos to the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the comprehensive plan? Counselor Purdy?
I move to close the public hearing and to schedule a final reading for March 28th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote to close the public hearing. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing passes seven-zero at 7:31. That is the last of the action items. Brings us to item 10, there is no new business this evening. Brings us to item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Keanrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beginning with Arts Commission Traffic Utility Boxes, in support of city beautification efforts, the newly formed Saco Arts Commission launched its first major initiative this winter, a contest to create art for three downtown traffic light boxes, or utility boxes. This project creates a harmonious combination of art and essential services and provides a great opportunity to make functional objects visually appealing and vibrant in downtown Saco. The commission invited artists to submit a digital art file to be printed and wrapped around three downtown traffic light boxes located in Eastman Park, the intersection of Water Street and Main Street, and on Saco Island. In late February, three winners were selected. Thornton Academy students Caitlin Rodriguez, Riley Sullivan, and Abigail Fox. Congratulations to our winners, those three. Their artwork can be viewed on the Art Commission's webpage on the city's website, and they are expected to be installed on the traffic utility boxes this coming April. An update on some document management initiatives, I've recently formed a city staff committee to begin looking at solutions for the very large volume of documents and records we are required to keep here on the city hall campus. Our storage space here between city hall and the annex has reached a breaking point, and we must look at storage and record retention alternatives. So this may include implementing an electronic document management system in conjunction with a scanning project where documents could then be searched or retrieved in that database. But the time has come with the amount of storage space we have in this building and the annex, and also just some of these structural integrity concerns in the attic and other pieces of this building, that we are going to be looking at some other alternative storage functions for the years to come. Lastly, just an RFP bid opportunity, the city of Saco is seeking proposals from individuals and/or companies who employ individuals who meet the minimum National Parks Service professional qualification standards and 36 CRF 61 for architectural history to conduct a reconnaissance-level architectural survey of Camp Ellis. Additionally, the city seeks those with experience in developing resiliency recommendations for historic homes that may be at risk in the event of severe weather experiences. Camp Ellis, located at the southern, southeast tip of the, of the Saco, southeast tip of Saco at the mouth of the Saco River, is a residential district and coastal commercial development in use as early as 1866. Home to some of Saco's oldest buildings, it is a historically significant fishing village and textile port, now threatened by severe weather experiences and coastline degradation. Proposals will be accepted until 11:00 AM on April 29th. Proposals should be electronically submitted to Molly Kirchoff, Assistant Planner, at M.Kirchoff, K-I-R-C-H-O-F-F, at sacomaine.org with the subject line RFP Camp Ellis, and there'll be a public opening, of course, of all proposals received at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Keanrath, any questions? No questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I want to propose this to the mayor, the deputy mayor, and our city administrator. In the, in the next couple of meetings, or I know we're coming up to budget season, so we're going to be busy. I'd like to, we done it, we did it in a past administration, but what I'd like to do is go back to that informal school circle roundtable where we met over here and just talk about, we'll set aside the rules, get rid of, for this one action item, no voting can happen. It's just us going over to the side, obviously in public and all that good stuff, but where we just have open discussions on what city councils' views, agendas, goals are, so that we can just talk about affordable housing, planning issues, schooling, sidewalks, things like that. And again, just in a non-confrontational, just over there, get rid of Robert's rules, no voting, and just honest discussions happening in a school circle type setting, in which we can just have open debate, open discussions. Again, no actual business, just communication. That's all I'm asking. And we have done this in the past, under past administrations, so.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Counselor Gunn?
I just want to, this is the first I'm hearing of it, and honestly, while I do like the idea of having new business, you know, from the dais though, so everything is happening in public and everybody sees it, at the same time, having us sit around a counter, a table and kind of hash some things out, because legally, that's the only way we can do it though. If more than three of us get on an email chain, then technically, it's a meeting and technically, it's forbidden, although it has happened in the past, and that's why I never participate in some of those discussions though. But be that as it may, be able to sit around while all the council is present, kind of hash these things out. Maybe get a lot with each other sometimes though, because there are some issues on here that, especially tonight, as it relates to future contract zones, the quote-unquote promise of giving the city historian position to somebody, which I was never under that impression when I voted to formalize that job. So there are some things that we need to discuss as a council that definitely meets a format that perhaps the, the old-timey sort of workshop might be a benefit to everybody in the situation. And I would, I'd have to associate myself with Counselor Archer and say, I think, at least for one-off, it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I would agree with Counselor Marshall's efforts. However, if we aren't able to do that, I am having some concerns about our inability to get items on our agenda. As you know, on, at our February 28th council meeting, after we adopted our council goals, I promised to submit my top four goals, I'm sorry, top three goals with, of the 12 that were approved to City Administrator Keanrath, which I, I did on March 4th, and I actually prioritized those to him and articulated why I thought they were priorities, at least in my, my own mind. I also submitted a list of action plans to accomplish the goals in hopes that that might generate some conversation. So I'm, I'm hoping that my fellow counselors have done the same or will very soon as I did challenge us all to do that. And I'm assuming that if a majority of the counselors identify the same action item, combined with similar public input on that same action item, the issue will be placed on the city council agenda for us to, to take action. I'd like to engage in the process of action, not inertia as, as soon as possible. You know, our constituents, the same ones who elect us to serve, are justifiably restless and are losing patience with us. And successful progressive organizations, including government bodies, provide responsive leadership and create action plans. Otherwise, they get stuck in what I view as a constant state of inertia. I'm not interested in the latter, and I don't think our constituents are either. So I would really encourage us to take action either way, informally, formally, whatever it takes to get, get things moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. First, I agree with Counselor Hatch's comments, and since we're on this, this topic of agendas, I'll just say that I suggest that the city council reach out to the administrator. As of Friday, he has a legal opinion on who controls the agenda in the city of Saco. It's not unilaterally through the mayor. So again, our requests need to start coming before council, and I'm now going to rely on the city administrator to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Any further council discussion and comment? Just for the record, for those of you who weren't on the council and maybe hadn't been paying attention, the previous administration held off on a blasting ordinance that I submitted in March, and they didn't put it on an agenda until October. People's homes were being destroyed. Their foundations were being cracked. Yet, the item wasn't important enough to take up for that amount of time. We have to remember that we have limited resources as a city, and there are a lot of things going on. It's budget time. Contract zones are important. Yes, they are. But there's no problem with the contract zones at the moment. At the moment, there's no contract zone that's, that's coming before council to be concerned about during budget time and during some of these other comprehensive plan issues. Remember that when you put something on the agenda and you take action, that puts something, that puts something into motion that then staff has to take time to deal with. And remember, any change to the zoning ordinance, then you put more pressure on the planning board because it has to go through them for any kind of review process. So adding contract zones to the planning board's agenda right now, when they just went through comprehensive plan, when you've asked them to speed up the process on MDR, when the marijuana zoning ordinance is going through, you know, plus the multitude of applications that they just have to see. I mean, we just have to be, kind of, remind ourselves sometimes that there's only a certain amount of time in the day for city staff to work on the multitude of issues that are going on. But we are progressing. For those that say we aren't, we are. We're moving things through the process, and things are getting done. So maybe, again, government moves slowly, but we are getting things done. It just might not be as fast as some people would like. But just remind ourselves, there, there's no, there's no process hiccup here, it's just prioritizing events as they come up. So this isn't, this isn't a political issue that it's being made out to be. It's merely just process. So, again, Counsel Archer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just basing off base, because you just brought it up, is that we have to prioritize what comes on the floor. So then why did we have to deal with the current zoning text amendment, I had action item B today, which didn't even make it? it, it was killed five-two, and it didn't even make it to the public hearing? So, again, it's more about prioritization and recognizing, oh, this is, this might be more valuable than the other one, because this didn't even make it to the next stage. But it had to go through all the processes with the lower committees.
It was a petition by an applicant that goes through the process that is the city ordinance.
But it doesn't have to come to us.
It has to come to you for review, and you guys voted it down at first reading, that's the process. It's a petition by an applicant. It's not, it's, it's not something that we're bringing forward as far as a new idea or a new concept, it's an actual petition by an applicant, it has to go through the process. It's different than if it's a new idea that we were bringing forward under new business.
Sorry, but this is council, I've always known this to be council discussion, this is where we, this is our time where we can say how we feel and things like that. But again, it was a negative recommendation from the planning board, it did not have to come to us, it did not have to have all this staff time. Again, I'm, I'm just picking this one out because we just did it, and that's why, and it was in response to how you brought it up. But it really confused me on this because here we are, just, I don't want to call it wasting time, we went through a process, yes, but, again, this was just agreed upon two years ago, so we could have put these efforts in this time somewhere else, and that's all I'm going to say, I'll end it here, but again, this is what just happened, so.
I would just remind the council, for those that weren't present, the planning board unanimously voted down convenient MDs, contract zone, however, the council actually approved it in a four-three vote, but it was unanimously voted down by the planning board. We just have to be mindful, as we look through this, that we are all in this together, and we have to prioritize the city needs.
I don't appreciate the lecture, first of all, that's not your role. Second of all, I don't think anybody's asking for anything outside of the administrator who has been supportive of some of these items, getting them on the agenda, that has been denied access by you, Mr. Mayor. That's what we're talking, that's what we're talking about. That's it. So, I mean, I understand.
That's a false assertion, I haven't blocked anything from getting on an agenda.
Okay, well, are you calling somebody a liar?
Any further council discussion and comment? Councilor Gunn?
I would just, to follow up with Councilor Archer, I can understand his frustration. The way I approached it, well, yes, while it was technically a negative recommendation, looking, yeah, because it was three-three, but at the same time, when I approached it with an open mind, it wa, I saw three-three, yeah, planning board voted it down, but the staff said, hey, this might be something, and they recommended it because it was simply in line with the comprehensive plan, and that's why I considered it, you know, worthy enough of our attention. Now, that being said, I, and I often explain this to people, that as a, as a body, we are essentially reactionary, not in the negative sense, but in the sense that things come to us rather than thing, we seek out things, like, for example, the, the change the zoning tonight though, well, that wouldn't have even, we wouldn't have randomly in August said, hey, you know what we should do? Really revisit that, that rezoning of the downtown though, so it's within the comprehensive plan to get some more density in there, because what's the point of having a comprehensive plan if you can't actually act on it though? Because, you know, as I said, that's a way of a comprehensive plan though, so, I mean, it's not like it would have been a contract zone for one person, it would have been a contract zone for everybody, and I recall Counselor Johnson's, the idea that maybe if we had talked about it further, maybe an overlay district or something like that, something that maybe would have been a little bit more fair to everybody. I mean, that's why I voted yesterday night, just to see if we could get it passed and maybe have some more discussion on it though, but it's, you know, we deal with these things like the comprehensive plan, which some people think are very esoteric, and some people think are militant, you have to follow it though, and at the same time, you know, they say, you know, comprehensive plan is open to interpretation, but then contract zones are like, well, those are like the Bible, it's like, we spent so much time on it though, that there is no possibility that in eighteen months that anybody could have gotten something wrong, but at the same time, we have a comprehensive plan that says we need to have a denser downtown district, and we have a contract zone that everybody wants to say, we spent so much time on it, you did a wonderful job on everybody involved, but we just want to leave it static to wait and see, but wait and see for what? I mean, we have comprehensive plans every ten years, and if nothing's going to be done, then it's just a piece of paper that's forced on us by the state and has no real meaning though, so I like us to, I mean, this is something like, if we ever get into conversation like, like you recommended, like having the old-timey sort of workshop, we can kind of hash these things out in terms of, you know, where we actually want to go, I mean, what's the actual debate? I mean, are some people using contract zones as an excuse to not develop, or are some people using comprehensive plan as the ability to develop? I mean, that seems to be the, the general sort of political division in this city that we're seeing right now, and there's, and both sides have valid arguments, but if we don't, if we don't look long-term, and we don't sort of like just make excuses to kick the can down on the road, I mean, like when people were saying earlier, you know, things haven't been vetted, well, vetted for what? I mean, we vetting for people who are against, you know, any development, or vetting for people that are for development? So, I mean, I'm not for talking in code or anything, I, I'm, I'm, I've been very upfront about being pro-development in the areas of the town, whether it's downtown, whether it's in my ward, Ward Three on this Route One stretch, places where it's appropriate that could be an economic engine for the city, and I'd like to see some talk about that because just, you know, leading up to contract zones and comprehensive plan discussion, we're basically just, we're using those as sort of red herrings to sort of say what we are for and what we're not for, and it's frustrating, and it's frustrating with the audience, and it's frustrating as a counselor, because, you know, I'd like to see us actually do some concrete things, and I'm just getting a whole bunch of, I can feel the blowback, you know, when it goes one way or the other, so it's a little frustrating, but as you can see, this is like the, hopefully, the type of conversation we will have in an actual kind of formal workshop though, because at least we can work some things out though, and how we actually feel, feel about things, you know, outside of specific issues though, which is really what we should be doing though, because the public should know where we stand on things, I mean, they sent us here for a reason. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment? Moving on to, there's no executive session tonight, that brings us to item fourteen, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes to adjourn, seven zero at seven fifty. Have a great evening, everyone.